Recording started here. Good. Let's get started. It's nine twenty. We waited twenty minutes. We spent up on Tamil. For a reason because YPF has is trying it for the first time that we meet. Shenvarisakali betneyata, aha, prayitnizwahe is happening for the first time and hence we allowed about twenty minutes of waiting for our people, our young people, our all the people who join us as so that they get an opportunity to come and join us in this meeting. We hope ki shanivari sakali betliyamole, we have a good beginning of the day, not that he kiranal, hey, I'm karaj so nahi, itar amse devas varid jata, it's not like that. I'm sure people use Saturday morning as when they get up, they read their Bible, they have their quiet time with the Lord. But as a group, as a fellowship, coming together Saturday morning, I felt and myself and Siona when we were talking, discussing about when is the right time, we both kind of came to a conclusion, maybe we should try Saturday morning. I'm sure there is one go, one person here who is smiling because he was praying for that. He sakali kakaratnayis, why do we always have it so late that you know it's very difficult to focus and concentrate when you're particularly a student? But there are challenges, as you know, YPF is a, is made up of a mix of people of different age groups. Majority of them are working class and working age and they are, they're struggling with various shifts. And if they are more, I think as a timing, we will ask them, we just felt those days that Saturday evening, late night, ten o'clock may be a best time and it worked well so far. But now maybe a time could try out something else. As you see on the group, on the screen, it's a Christmas special meeting. It's a Christmas special meeting that we are calling it. And literally counted yesterday, ki bappa, Christmas cha devasa cha adhi amala devu rupene, hai don Saturdays mira lele aai. Why not we use them for a special purpose? Because Christmas, the world rejoices, the world enjoys, there are Christmas parties, there are events. Even those people who don't know a single thing about Jesus, they also party in these days. The world is busy, but there is a special thing that has happened as we remember on the occasion of this so-called Christmas period. Right? This has come traditionally, this particular, you know, winter period, people use it for this reason and we who believe in Jesus, we have every reason to rejoice every day. Pratek devas amja sakki, ah, Krista sa prabhu ne dilena, navin devas asto, so we celebrate every day in our heart, hence we are able to rejoice in our heart always. But this is a special time because the world is ready to hear us. Jagamade loka thore tayar astat, ki ha, ha, ya, lokanta swarna hai, mati deva kai sangthir kiwa, swarta sangthir kiwa, karal singing laiye thir. Let's listen to them, you know, it's beautiful, ah, pratek acha swarna asta, ta sahenza isarai, so there people are more receptive and more open. And so we must take an opportunity to get there and inject the message. It's very important that people hear the name of Jesus. So we decided that we will use this first, this Saturday and next Saturday as a special Christmas service where we will want to fill it with a bit more of hymns, singing and you know, we encourage. We saw Siona's message yesterday, ki tumala punalasar gani maiti astil, and if you want to leave the group into singing, please give your name and the song that you would like to sing. I know, yeah, group madhi, there are many talented young boys and girls. And even, you know, you know, those who are advanced in age, we are all, we love to sing for the Lord, we love to raise our voices for the Lord. So come forward, please give your name to Siona so that if not in this meeting, the next Saturday, we make it a special Saturday and sing beautiful chals online. Because it's very difficult to, we as a young group, we are yet to come to that maturity and engagement and commitment. Commitment is required when we have to plan an event outside, somewhere else in the church or some other place. It's very difficult to drive it by one person. So I'm looking for this group to grow in commitment, in linking with each other, planning together. Until that, this season, we're gonna go online. Yeah. So that is a little bit of an overview of what's happening today. We are gonna look, as you're looking at it, as YPF always stands for, you're not here to hear preaching. Yeah. If anyone of you has come here to say, okay, let me hear good thoughts this morning and I've come to hear a preaching. You are not facing a preacher here, you are just facing a believer who with you, coming on the round table, discussing, scanning and diving into the word of God. And hence, feel free to ask a question. And this story of Jesus's birth at the time, yes, Krista cha janmacha, verichya, the events aai. Aplaya baras dukana maiti aai. We have studied them, we have read them, we have heard them and every year our churches preach about them. So we all know very many facets of it. I might not be able to cover every aspect of it in the given time. But feel free to add or ask question or challenge even an understanding here when we do study together. Yeah. We're gonna look into Dr. Luke. He, as he presents an investigative report, which is his report of all the events that he investigated and put forward. Yeah, on the events before and at the birth of John the Baptist. Yeah, that's what we're gonna look today. We're gonna look at John the Baptist. Tacha janmacha, verichya, oris, kais zhalo, kasa zhalo, ka zhalo. And then next Saturday, we're gonna look into the very birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ, for whom John the Baptist came in advance to prepare the way. Yeah. So I just urged people to read the Luke, Luke one. Before you come, if you have read, brilliant. If not, we will gonna read that passage together today anyway. But as we get into our service, let me see who always there in the meeting. Joy, do you, do you want to lead us to prayer, do the opening prayer and then we set into our next step of this service?
Yes, sir, sure.
Please.
Let us pray. Bless glory and honor between you and God. Thank you, master. Thank you, Holy Spirit, for being with us. Lord, we thank you for such a beautiful day you have given us. Lord, we pray as we have connected, meditating upon your word, Lord. Help us to learn more new things from the study, oh Lord. Lord, we pray for the people of YPF. Help all of us to grasp the learning that we learned today and bless each and every one of us. Thank you, Lord, for all the things you have blessed us with. We give you all glory, honor and praise. We ask this prayer in the name of a Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Joy. Good. Let's get into a little bit of a singing spirit. Yeah. And I would like to request for our first song, Siona and her family, her mom and dad there, they're always, they're always, they help us lead into singing. Most of our Saturday meetings are led by them to, opened by them by singing a beautiful hymn. So Siona, if you're ready, if you want to go with this.
Yes, Tada. Are we audible clearly?
Yeah, very much. If you want to summarize the song in two, three words, through the sentence, feel free to do that as well. Just to give people, you know, an understanding, synopsis of what this song is about. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Ah, so, jar apan kal invite pagichlaasal, sar ek vachan taklela, Isaiah nine six. Um, it, it said that.
This one.
Yeah, it said that, for unto us, a child is born, unto us, a son is given, and the government will rest upon his shoulders and his name will be called wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Tar, he gana, tads, tacha varas beste, he gana, if we translate it in English, it says, Jesus name above all names. And he has again, yes, shula, apan, je kahi naava bolto, je kahi phrases deto. So it describes all of that. Please join us as we sing.
Eeshu sabnamu me sreshna, sundaru thaal, mahima may prabhu. Mahan, parameshvar hai saad, dhansyat prata, jeevit vacha. Eeshu alfa omega, unaru thaan jeeva, raadhi raas. Parameshvar, ka hai omega na, hamare khathil, ho va balidaan. Eeshu, shanti ka rajkumara, albu salaa, karta hamse pyaar. Saap, rakta hu ajitaan, sarvastamad, srushti kaadaan. Eeshu, hai tu kitna maha, preme parameshvar, karunani tha. Imhasan, par tu hai virajna, parampavitra, parampratha.
Thank you so much. It's a beautiful hymn even in English. It's exact translation, I guess. Ami amcha church madhi, you came madhi, guy suri gana, Emmanuel, wonderful Savior, wonderful counselor. Thank you so much for saying, leading us into the song. We're gonna have our second hymn, Ana Tera Mubarak. Yeah, again, this is a Hindi hymn and as we approach to the so-called Christmas season and we are trying to remember all those things happened, happened for us as the Lord loved his creation. Coming of Jesus is the blessed thing for the people. Ana Tera Mubarak. I'll sing here, myself and Priya, we're gonna sing here. Hopefully we will be in it. Ana tera mubarak, e do jahan wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. Karthi, ab talak sab, teri intzari, teri intzari. Karre, maasiyo par, jannat nishan wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. Kalma hai tu khuda ka, iman hai hamara, iman hai hamara. Karre ab, kalau hamse, shiri zabaan wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. Dunia meh tari ki, tu noor hai haki ki, tu noor hai haki ki. Rooshan, jaan ko karde, rooshan, jahan wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. Ham chod ke khudki ko, dar pe, tere aae, dar pe, tere aae. Karle kabur hamko, chagni me aane wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. E do jahan wale, khushiya mana reh. Saare jahan wale, ana tera mubarak. It's God. Go into. Good. I wanna quickly ask people out there, if anybody wants to present a hymn and sing it at this moment and lead us into the hymn that you love and like, that is usually used in the Christmas period, please feel free to do that now if you want to. Yeah. If in towards the end, if you feel like, please do so as we also decide to let Tati, if he wants to sing towards the end as well. We will have opportunities to sing hymns together. Right. We come into our next part as we look into the Luke chapter one. I want us to read Luke chapter one, verses twenty-six to thirty-eight. Maybe that's a big passage. We will only read verses thirty-four to thirty-eight as the reading of the word and then we're gonna look into the entire chapter anyway. Yeah. Anybody wants to read from Lukasapaila, the vachan, so this day, Adatis. There's English in the front. Somebody wants to go ahead and read from English and it's a Jhatat Bible asail Marathi. So someone can read the same passage in Marathi as well.
I'm going to read.
Okay.
And Mary said to the angel, how will this be since I am a virgin? And the angel answered her, the Holy Spirit will come upon you and the power of the most high will overshadow you. Therefore the child to be born will be called holy, the son of God. And behold, your relative Elizabeth, in her old age, has also conceived a son. And this is, and this is the sixth month with her, who has called barren. For nothing will be impossible with God. And Mary said, behold, I am the servant of God. So I am the, I am the servant of the Lord. Let it be to me according to the word. And the angel departed from.
Okay. Anybody in Marathi? Yeah.
Devdu tanne uttar dile, pavitra atma tuja var eet, ani parat parache samarthi tuja var chaya karit. Ya karana ne, jacha janma hoy, tala pavitra deva cha putra, ashe manthi. Paha, tuja natathli ali shiva, hilahi matar pani putragarbar aila aai. And jila vansh manat, tila ha sahava maina aai, karan devala kahi ashakhi hona nahi. Teva maria manali, paha, me prabhu chidashi, apan sanghitla pramane, mala ho, mag devdu tijja pasul, negun gela. Amen.
Amen. Praise God. Thank you so much for all those who read the scripture as is the practice of YPF, Young People's Fellowship. We are learning this song and before we open the word of God, we are praying with the prayer we come before the Lord. I don't have my daughter here with me who would lead me in singing, but I think many of us here know this hymn now and we can sing it wherever we are, although we are on mute. So we're gonna give it a try. It's a prayer. When we come to the Lord's word, we don't want to just read it as a text and go away from it. We want, oh Lord, you to speak with us through your word. Yeah. So maybe rather singing, I'm just gonna read that song very quickly so that we can just hear. Speak, oh Lord, as we come to you, receive the food from your holy word. Tuja jivant vachana sa, ah, mala, ande midaavu, majha atmaera, shanti midaavi, ya sakhi dhiya vachana karit. Take your truth, planted deep in us. So sattege, majha antakana, deep tu te plant kar, plant ke leli ghosta, ti vaarte. Whatever it is buried, not dead, but buried in here, as a seed of word of God that will grow and it will shape and fashion me in your likeness. Tuja sorupat tu amala tu hado. That the light of the Christ might be seen today in our acts of love and our deeds of faith. Amcha jagamade vavrat astana, vishvasadware piti ne, ani jit sani kutte ami kurtto, amcha vishvasadware, hecha mure, Krista sa prakash, amcha madhi lokana diusde. Oh, speak, oh Lord, and fulfill in us all your purposes for your glory. Prabhu, yes, Krista, prabhu, parameshvara, tuji, pravasavri sagriya yojana, amcha madhun tu rabo, ani te amala samasnya sati tu amcha sati bo. Teachers, Lord, full obedience, holy reverence and humility. Adnya palana, adnya palan, pavitra, ani namrata, yashuva, prabhu, parameshvara, tuji, shisha, ami, urukle zana naist, ya sati, prabhu, ya attributes, ya characteristics, amcha madhi tu amala shikavu. Test our thoughts and our attitudes in our, in the radiance of your purity. Tuja pavitra, tya cha prakhar prakash, ya prakhar prakashamade, amcha vicharan, tu parak, amcha attitude, ami, tuja karta je karto, tuja bolna, pramana, tuja bolte, aaserto. Hecha madhi, amcha attitude kaai, are we really relying on you or we are coming to you with our selfish desires? Or just come there because everybody is going. Lord, test us and validate us. Cause our fate to rise, ya sagriya madhi, amala khali jau nuhose, par amcha vishwas varhel, astu, par cause our eyes to see, amcha dora ni, amala tu kai ghado to aist, amcha azu la kai karta aist. Ya ghosti tu amala pahad yaas, madat kar. Your majestic love and authority, tuja preman, tuji authority, amcha aishat, ti amala diusde. Words of power that can never fail. Tuja vachan je aai, hecha var, ami, purna pani, avlam gun rava, ya vishvasa ne, ki tuja vachana majdi, shakti aai, ki kadhi hi na sampanari, kadhi hi na haranari, shakti aai. Tuja vachana chathai, ami aasu, par amha madhi, tuji ke shakti karke kare. Let their truth prevail over unbelief. Amcha madhi, amcha azu bazula, jo avishvasa sa dharg aai, ya avishvasa sa dharg sarla jawa, ani hecha varti, satya ani rajya karavu, ya sati tu amala tyaakar, ya sati tu amcha shibol. Speak, oh Lord, and renew our minds. Parameshvara, amcha shibol, tu amcha jema jema, tu amcha shibol tu prabhu, amcha antakarna, navin ghadvali zata. Help us grasp the heights of your plan for us. Tuji, amcha sati, ya yojana aai, tuja sangliya sati aai, amcha bhavisha sati aai, ani hechi, unchi, khub mahan aai. Amala te, amcha buddhi samarthi, ani kadhi karinaras nahi, teri bappa, tu, amala tuja pankhav boso, ani unse jyun dakho, tuji, amcha sati plans kaai. Truth unchanged from the dawn of time. Akana cha shurvati pasun, je satya stapand kelela aai, tuja sutnate madhi, tuja buddhi madhi, in the wisdom of the Lord. The truth was established from eternity to eternity and unchanging truth. And heya, satya madhi, tu amala vaado, je kadis badalay nahi, that echoes down through eternity, the satya, ami, guni aikla nahi, bolna nahi, tu satya kadhi thamna nahi, te nehmi aikla zail, ani sanghitla zail. And by grace, we will stand on your promises. Tuji, amala vachane delele aais, tu vachanachi aatvand korun, bappa, tuja vachana, ami uberau, kasha madhi, amcha sani karma aano nahi. Par tuja grace varti, tuja karnam mira leli, mofati grace Krista madhi, tu amala aai, ti ami swikartu, ani vishwakrista madhi mira lela, sarva promises pati ami uberato. And by faith, we will walk as you walk with us. Yes, Krista, Emmanuel, God with us, he walked with us, he came to us. Toja samchavru bakla, wa, wa, challa, tas, ami ata, vishvasadware, hecha var, challa va, amse, kus, kham, jyun, challa va, ya sati, bappa, ki amala tu bolne chikar zai. Speak, Lord, till your church is built and the earth is filled with your glory. Tuja aavaa amala aipo de, prabhu, karan tuja church banda sa kam kadhi thamna nahi, te purna raai, ani amcha Krista, ye na raai, amcha vishvasa aai. May the Lord speak with us through whatever we're gonna learn from Luke one this morning. Amen. Good. Let me first of all, welcome you all to this beautiful day that the Lord has given us and this special meeting as YPF intends. YPF ji, ichha hai, ki ami ha, hai don Saturday, ekav vishisht prakare. Ektrion sajre karavid, ani amcha jo prabhu, yes, Krista, hecha ye na chi, ami ji, swarta, mona aikli, kiwa receive karto, ani ata, dusran na deyala, tadpor hoto. Asse ami, ya devasamade, kai zhalo, he, thodo se zavul, ektrion, padavun, pahana cha prithne karna ra. As you see, the agenda on the screen is very clear. Amir, pana raavut, ki ha, Luke, shubhavartaman, gospel according to Luke, ha, Luke, aaitari ko. Was he one among those people who were baptized when Peter preached, in three thousand people were baptized? Or who is he? Luke, kona aai, hecha sa agenda kaai, apan pana raavut. You're gonna read the words and then according to Luke into that. Then, apan ji vachno vatsa le, hecha madhi hota, ki nothing is impossible with God. Meri la, to devdu, mondo, Gabriel, there's nothing impossible for God. And if they bolut astana, what is that impossible? God of impossibilities is this. We're gonna look into that through the word of God. And then lastly, as we read again, we're gonna touch on these facts. All glory to God. Parameshvara, sarva gavro, paramasarva garu, gavro, acha mankari, parameshraai, there is no one in this earth, no one, none of us can take glory to ourselves. We cannot steal from God's glory. All glory to God, whatever happens. And we hear about the two miracles. Don achambe, don, don, ajam ghosti ghadlele. Miracles in the life of Elizabeth, who is an old lady, who has lost all her hopes. Taken the life as it comes. And Mary, who has not seen the life, a young girl, a beautiful, young, simple girl whose parents have given her her faith and she trusts in a creator, a miracle in her life. This is what we're gonna study today. Yeah. While you're looking into that, if anything comes to your mind, if any question comes to mind, any challenge you feel, please feel free to stop me and ask that. If a question is relevant to the topic and to the text, we will try to answer. If not, if you're not able to answer, we will search for the answer together. If that is something big, if it is moving us from the agenda, we will park it to meet again and study those words. As you know, YPF is all about bringing young people together. It's a platform that the Lord has given us. Parameshvara ne delele, he amala rasputa aai, jithe, ami tarunana avan karto boloto, ani hecha vashna chiu, uttar deyacha prithne konto. It's all about answering, karan, nirmer antakarna, ni vicharliya, vashna alla, jad, uttar miraala, tar, te antakarn, pavi, yes, shukurek, avar zun, orle zai. Right. So that's what we believe. Good. We're gonna go close to the word of God. Who is Luke? Luke, shubhavartaman, ya sa, paila adhai, and as it starts, in as much as, in, in as much as many have undertaken to compile a narrative of the things that have been accomplished among us. a narrative of the things that have been accomplished among us amcha made ya ghosti ghadle ya ghosti sangnatala ya ghosti na lina sa prathna baris janani ke lela hai liun teuna zai it's very important liun teune he far garze zahi keeping a record of what has happened must be written down so that the next generation can know what has happened history is there for the next generation to learn from it learn from its failures learn from its successes so baras lokani yena sa prathna ke la hai just as those who from the beginning were eyewitnesses and ministers of the word have delivered to us kunia amala anundilela hai kunia amala vishwas di lela hai avishwas ja lokani swatacha dora ne pay lela hai swatacha hatane hatar lela hai asha lokani amala ya ghosti sangitliya hai ya vishwacha sa ghosti di lela hai right what is happening Luke ha yehudi nahin Luke ha ek sor sort of a Greek person person in the Roman Empire right he is writing and he is saying that amcha parint ya ghosti ja ghadle ja sangnatala te sangnatala janni from the beginning were eyewitnesses and the ministers of the world devacha vachana che sevak janni swatacha dora ne payle asha lokani lokani amcha parint te ponsore it seemed good to me also ja pramane baki chani lecha prathna ke la te pramane mala hi he yogke vath I am also prompted by the spirit of God devacha atma mala pravrutta karta hai ki it must be written down it seemed good to me having followed all things closely for for some time fast kai vere purnvi pasun mia sarva ghosti zavol zawn padtaalta hai vicharata hai ani follow karta hai to write an orderly account for you yeah kai what is his agenda his agenda is to write an orderly account for someone for you most high most excellent Theophilus Theophil Raja this samarati made translate ke la hai tuja sati I am writing a most orderly account that you may have certainty concerning the things you have been taught agenda here is that ami ji vishwasne rea hot amcha sati it will be a text of certainty thomala yeshu krista mana la thomas punurtha natar yeshu krista cha marana natar hiser deshi yeshu krista oklan natar thoma teya bharashishan bata hota jala vishwas basatna to mala ami vishwas chavana na jo par mala paha mala krista bisna nahe ani techa sati bandh ruh made yeshu krista darwaza bandhana dekhi pragad hoto pravatana cha ye gavrovi shanira se yeshu krista ani te te thomala bantu thoma paha I have risen ani thoma te no kamastak hotu prabhu karats you are the Lord ani te yeshu krista thomala manto tu payle ani vishwas chavala parun tu dhanya te je na pata vishwashte ani ya group made ami baris ya shi ahot janni yeshu krista la payles nahin janni konta motha chamatkara hi baki te la nahe ausha made yet we have been brought by the grace of God because parameshwar pita amala atma ne uthoto ani te atma ne uthola ni amcha made teya papa cha shemechi yachana nirman karto ani yeshu krista pure na patahi tela techa kushe kampa samurana to ani amala paschata kap korun vishwasa anto parun tu asse ami je vishwasa taaleli dasa ha Theophilus Theophilus Theophil Raja jo hai to dekhi vishwasa taalela hai parun tu te ni kahi kute paylelas nahin asha vyakti sati for the certainty of events that they may know you know there are people who ask are tumca vishwas konta tumca kristi vishwas ma krista gudal sa krista Israel sa krista Jewish basan but tumi maharasthat kai karta asha prashna vicharli zata some of our elderly people were recently asked this question while they were coming from Kashmir ki vav tumca raja tikarza tumca dev tikarza ma tumi te kai karta it's very important for us to know the history and we are maharastrians yet amcha antakarna cha zoraa hai history ji Israel pasun suruzali ji Bethlehem pasun suruzali it becomes our history because by faith we become the children of Abraham right so Luke is writing a systematic account of what all happened right before the birth of Jesus Christ karan ami Theophil Raja tumi vishwas chavla hai yeshu krista vartit taranara yeshu krista te is only one name apun shurvati lagana hai there is no other name in which there is salvation Theophil Raja tu vishwas chavla hai me hi vishwas chavla hai tuja atma ja kai parak nahe but now I have investigated systematically and I will write it down for you but not for you alone dev pita lukani di lela ya account la techa ya puna Bible made sthandit there are many who have written the gospel but not all those who wrote has got place in the scripture lukala ya lukacha gospel la apna Bible made zaga midaaliya hai what an achievement what a blessing right Luke writes this Luke not only writes Luke shuvavartaman per lukani azun ek pushtak lele do you know which book Luke wrote actually it's a very simple answer but I would like to ask so that I can have a simple word preesidhan chikrute praise God preesidhan chikrute I call it as a sequel Luke ni Luke shuvavartaman lele natar yeshu krista cha marana natar kahe zala immediately started writing that because Theophil Raja must know how the gospel came to him in the Romans province Romans samraj cha ya vikul lela Europe made tuja parint to swarta ali kashi are kola pura made maja ponzobana swarta sangitlis kashi ali kashi te parint to tumcha garana made kai var generation purvi if you are the Christian family by you know by four generation now mark my word nobody is born Christian but apna families made kristi vishwasalela hai te vishwas dware pratek vyakti te family made janam lela natar he or she must be born again cannot say amcha ko family made charu generation pasun krista hota which is what I used to say as well but eventually I learned that I am not Christian by birth but Theophil tuja parint ha vishwasala kasar monu preesidhan chikrute lela talu ani kasar jagamade yeshu kristani di leliya great commission dware ki jagacha shivta parinza ami tumcha varasil swarta sangha teanna vishwas deyaa teasa baptisma kara ani teanna shisha banva hekman teya Luke ni preesidhan chikrute made liun teu liya Luke who was he Luke is a doctor by profession there are many people who say are vishwasne sa vishwas maju tumi lokacha garza bhakta teanna khaila pehla nastu monu tumi teanna krista sangta monu tumi teanna khaila pehla dehta ani asha lokana tumi convert karta asse bolna re baris lokai asa arth kaadna re baris lokai and there is a term called rice Christians rice Christians majde de jo din hotae de dubode hotae teanna kunii bhagat gudar samaja teanna sthandhot ashan kade swartik gelae ani teanna swarta sangitli ani tonchi swarta sangitni nahe per teanna khaila pehla job sagray di la shala uvarliya hospital di le then the swartiks went beyond their limit go went extra mile and established this poor people achuth people where the samaj was not even looking at them it's very easy for some to some to judge and say arey kristi loku tumcha ghade ya zalit kristi karan tumala te tumi teanna di la no 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 doctor Luke Luke is a doctor a professional Narayan Vamundra Akthiak is a professional he is a learned Brahmin and many names I can take kristi vishwas ha dubodean karta nahe kristi vishwas ha teancha karta hai janna kada la hai ki te athme ne durbal nustes durbal nahe per meleli aist teanna teancha papa chikshama paye ma teya vyakti la doesn't have to be a beggar on the road he can be a king as well in the palace jeva jeasa antakarn parameshwar badulto to vishwasa di to ani monu Luke ha doctor vav preesidh paula cha swartik dware vishwasa tha ha ari la vyakti ani vishwasa jo ye to to shantabasu shakat nahe karan pratek ek vyakti jala parameshwaratse parameshwar antakarn badulto and vishwasa anto he becomes and a soldier in the army of the Lord Jesus Christ he becomes the instrument in the hands of God and so ha chikitsa Luke jeva vishwasa taala shantabasu shakala nahe ki me ya Roman samraj jaatla ek Greek amche deva hai ami lokan devala amcha deva no varukshik karto per kutun ha vishwasala ani maja gharat mala bedun maja parintala ani mala taran di la ani me ata I'm so passionate about it he kasar shakya hai this is a miracle in my life I must investigate this miracle I must go and talk to that Mary that Mary who gave the birth to Jesus in whom I believe jecha dware mala astaran bala lela hai can you imagine tumcha parint ailela vishwas ha sadha nahe tumcha parint ailela vishwas ha dev pita parameshwar pita sa samarthya hai and even it touches you you cannot sit idle you cannot be a simple Christian vachan made tu ahosade loku ahosimple loku koot vart tumi simple rata come to the faith and become smart you can't be simple if you believe in Jesus so Luke reason in spirit athme ne janam lela navin zalela ha vyakti he now goes and investigates everything and now he writes a systematic account to an authority in his region for the certainty concerning the things you have been taught nustechi kolal nahe per tu vishwas chuntiya atma saath ke lela ghosti aist ata teya ghosti ja tumi atma saath ke lela aist teya sangna garze zahi we cannot take the living water to me and just collect it saato lela pahana la vas lakto it must be flowing to the others you must be speaking monu petra apna la avan de tu per techa pahila pushtaka made be ready to defend your faith what you believe why you believe hence Luke writes it Luke kutte kutte amala disto I'm gonna quickly go I just Googled it and found one text where somebody has summarized to us Luke's appearance Bible made scripture made kutte kutte Luke disto Luke on his preesidhan chikrute lele Luke on his Luke shuvavartaman leader parun tu preesidhan chikrute li ta stana he was the one among those who are running around ani imagine Luke going to Jewish people asking about what happened Petra she bolai che Yohana she bolai che Andrew she bolai che to navin you know one of the Judas Judas died after Jesus's death before the resurrection but another apostle was appointed techa shi bolai zahi amescha raste vati janari don shisha janna yeshu krista bhetla ani punurtha natar service techa shi bolai zahi Mary she bolai zahi ya sagray she bolai zahi it's not easy job Luke had to put his life in risk at risk because Petra and all these people were all running around and hiding they were not Christianity was not a great religion to be part of Christianity was a hidden faith that the Lord had given and people underground hotae henchamade jan gappchup lapad lapad zawn investigate korun Luke was putting his life at risk oh believer oh you believer oh Atul oh joy oh Siona oh Ameya are we ready to put our life to risk for the Lord are we ready to come out of our own comfort zones and get in there to know what is it and to tell people the gospel Luke has put his life at risk at many times and if you go to you know the channel the there's a channel where all the biblical stories are being displayed it's called I forgot the name I'll remember techa made they made a movie to show in the current days if Luke was in the current days how would I have looked like and they gave us a sense of a beautiful sense of how Luke put his life into this but Luke was part of Paul jithe Paul preesidhan chikrute made kitte kura Paul vartit halley karna talay ani Paul na padun jal lagla we veda pranta tava lagla so he is he is mentioned in act 16 for he Luke joins him to Paulacha patran made palashikaras patra phali man philomena sati li leli patra ani timatya sa li li patra ya patran made dekhi Luke ya doctor sa ullekh ke lela hai yeah so it's beautiful to know that we are reading a text written by this man a man who is in love of the Lord he loves his creator he loves Lord Jesus Christ and is ready to put his life at risk and his agenda is not only Theophilus but agenda is for YPA from everybody on his earth to really take his text seriously because it is a systematic account of what happened in those days that we may believe and have and have a historical background good that covers our first point any question before I move to the next one probably no I'll move to the next one yeah just give me a little yes to know whether you are already able to hear me still
Yes sir
yeah good now we're gonna read into the next passage
Atul
yeah
may I ask one question with which verse and chapter of Timothy is mentioned about Luke that he was a doctor can you guide me there if you have it
okay okay I think it's Colossians where it mentions the that he's a doctor he's a physician he's a physician it's in Colossians check that you can find it and other places it is not mentioned like that yeah but he's part of the team he with me Luke XYZ no at the at the end of the greetings Paul mentions their names who with him why he's writing the letters or why he's journeying from one place to the other but in Colossians particularly is where his mention about physician is there
okay thank you I'll check it
yeah so just make a picture of this you can in fact there is a text you know there is a document who was Luke you can even read that entirely and give you a bit more of a एटार्ली आणि गिव यू अ बिट मोर ऑफ अ अंडरस्टैंडिंग ऑफ इज लाइफ आणि इज मिनिस्ट्री. या? गुड. कमिंग बॅक तू, गुड, आई लाइक डे वे यू आस्ट डे क्वेश्चन, डेट्स व्हाट वी वांट, वी वांट अ डायलॉग हियर. आई ऑलवेज गेट क्वेश्चन बाय माय वाइफ सेंग, यू नो व्हाट, या मिटिंग मध्ये नुस्तत तून बोलो तसपूज, यू नॉट लेट अन्यबडी स्पीक. सो प्लीज पीपल, गेट स्पीकिंग, आस्ट डे क्वेश्चन, या? फ्राइंग, आई वांट तू पुट अ लिली मॅप इन फ्रंट ऑफ यू बिफोर गेटिंग इन तू डे टेक्स्ट. राइट, नव, वी नो, डेट आर फोर पीपल हु रोड डे गॉस्पल. स्वार्था, देवाची स्वार्था, या जगा करता, यशुकृष्टाच्या जन्माद्वारे आणि त्याच्या जीवनाद्वारे आणि त्याच्या मरणात आणि पुनर्थान मध्ये, ही पूर्ण स्वार्था आहे, की चार लोकांनी लिली. परंतु चार लोकांनी वेगवेगळ्या टाइम्स मध्ये लिली. वेगवेगळ्या उद्देशानी लिली, वेगवेगळ्या आणि इंस्पिरेशन ऑफ डे होली स्पिरिट. या दे हॅड गाइडेंस आस वर आत्मेने वेयर दे रोड दिस थिंग्स, राइट? सो फोर ऑफ देम, कॅन यू टेल मी हु आर अपॉसल्स आणि हु आर डिसाइपल्स? हु आर अपॉसल्स आणि हु आर डिसाइपल्स अमोंग दिस फोर? अनी वरी, अनी अनी गेस?
ऑल आर अपॉसल्स.
ऑल आर अपॉसल्स, ओके, वेरी गुड गेस, अनीबडी अस?
ऑल दोज हु फॉलो जीसस आर डिसाइपल्स.
वेरी गुड आंसर, बट अनी मोर गेसेस? आई लाइक डे तू आंसर्स, डे वे आय डे आप कम, वी वी विल मिक्स देम बोथ आणि गेट डे क्लेरिटी आउट, या? यू, इट्स ओके.
इट्स नॉट ओके, तू, कुल समय अन्न में जे
आई अल सेंड यू डी राइट, ओके, सो डेट आर फोर पीपल हु रोड डे गॉस्पल. इन फॅक्ट मोर देन फोर पीपल हॅव ट्राइड तू राइट डे गॉस्पल. बट बाय डे इंस्पिरेशन ऑफ डे होली स्पिरिट, बाय डे बाय डे इलेक्शन आणि चॉइस आणि स्क्रिटिनी आणि व्हाट आवर यू वांट तू से, बाय डे अथॉरिटी ऑफ गॉड, ओनली फोर हॅव गोद डे रिकॉर्ड्स ब्रॉट इन तू डे बाइबल. सो वन सेकंड फीट. सोरी, आई अम बॅक, आई वेलेडी दिस पार्ट वेयर आई वैनिस्ट ऑन डी स्क्रीन. ओके, सो वन आंसर वस ऑल आर अपॉसल्स, आणि डे सेकंड आंसर वर ऑल आर डिसाइपल्स. सो डे सेकंड आंसर इस इस करेक्ट, डेफिनेटली, नॉट ओनली दिस फोर, ऑल ऑफ अस हु बिलीव इन जीसस अस सन ऑफ गॉड हु डाइट फॉर मी आणि रोज अगेन आणि ही इस गोन आर कम बॅक. आई अम अ बिलीवर, बोन अगेन आणि अ डिसाइपल, डेट इज नो क्रिष्टियन हु कॅन से, ओ नो नो नो, आई अम नॉट डिसाइपल. एव्ही बिलीवर इस अ डिसाइपल ऑफ जीसस क्राइस्ट, राइट? देन विदिन डे डिसाइपलशिप यू हॅव कॉलिंग, डेट आर सम गेट पॉइंटेड अस डीकन इन डे चर्च आणि एल्डर्स इन डे चर्च आणि टीचर्स आणि प्रेचर्स इन डे चर्च, राइट? बट एव्ही मेंबर इस अ डिसाइपल, डेट इज नो नो अदर थिंग, वी ऑल हॅव अ फाउंडेशन आणि डे बेसलाइन विच इस वी आर डिसाइपल. सो लताता यू आंसर वस अब्सोल्युट करेक्ट. आणि सियोना, व्हेन इट से ऑल आर डिसाइपल्स, वी नी तू फर्स्ट अंडरस्टैंड डे डेफिनेशन ऑफ सोरी, नॉट डिसाइपल, डेन आय यूज डिसाइपल वर्ड आणि अपॉसल वर्ड? आई थिंक आय यूज अपॉसल वर्ड, या, मिक्स ऑफ माय वर्ड, अपॉसल्स आणि डिसाइपल्स. सो ऑल फोर आर डिसाइपल्स, बट डे अपॉसल्स आर दोज हु वॉक विथ जीसस. वी लुक्ड इन तू लास्ट स्टडी, डेवर 12 हु वॉक विथ जीसस. वन वस जुडस, हु वस, यस ही वॉक विथ जीसस, बट ही वस नॉट अन इलेक्ट तू बी सेड. या? आणि हेंस दे अपॉइंटेड सम्वन अल्स इन आक्स, आई डोन हॅव डे रेफरेंस रेडी विथ मी. बट आक्स मधे, जेवा पहिला अध्याय मधे, पहिला दुसरा अध्याय मधे, दे सेड की आपण 12 आजून होतो. त्याचला एक तर मेला आहे, वी नी तू फुल फुल डे नंबर अगेन. सो लेट्स पुट लॉट आणि फाइंड अ पर्सन रिप्लेसमेंट. परंतु ओनली दोज, दे कुड टेक अस अ क्राइटेरी आहे की दोज हु वॉक विथ अस विथ जीसस. जेणी यशुकृष्टाला पहिला आहे, जेणी यशुकृष्टामध्ये आपच्या वरुण सांल्या आहे. असे दोन लोकांना ते निवडतात आणि लॉर्ड करून त्याचला एक क्लास निवडतात. सो डेफिनेशन ऑफ अपॉसल इस दोज हु विथ जीसस इन दोज, इन डेट टाइम इन दोज थ्री इयर्स ऑफ मिनिस्ट्री आणि डी 33 इयर्स ऑफ जीसस अ लाइफ ऑन डे अर्थ. या, तर अपॉसल्स आर दोज हु वॉक विथ जीसस, टच्स इन, हग्ड हिम, वॉक विथ हिम, फेल्ट हंग्री विथ हिम. देवा जेवा तिनी पाच मासे आणि दोन बाकरीचे पाच हजार लोकांना वाढले बनवले. त्याचे ते गिण सरणा वाढले होते, यू नो ऑल दोज थिंग, सो दिस मिरेकल्स. डेट इस कॉल्ड अपॉसल, आणि डेट इस वन ओनली वन हु इस बोन अन नॉर्मली, विच इस अपॉसल पॉल. प्रशित पॉलाला, यशुकृष्टाने डायरेक्ट दुस्तांत दिला, आणि ही ब्रॉक हिम इन तू डे फेद आणि ही बिकेम डे इंस्ट्रमेंट ऑफ गॉड, इन डे हॅंड्स ऑफ गॉड फॉर डे जेंटाइल, फॉर विधर्मयांसाठी. नॉन जुईश लोकांसाठी प्रशित पॉलाची निवड जाती. सो डेट इस कॉल्ड अपॉसल्स, आणि हियर इफ यू सी, मत्ते जो टॅक्स कलेक्टर होता. त्याला यशुकृष्टाने बोलोले आणि मणला फॉलो मी, डेट्स मॅथ्यू इस डे अपॉसल. आणि योहान, योहान हा प्रेशितांच्या सम्पूर्ण 12 लोकांमध्या सगळ्या तरुण यशुकृष्टाच्या जास्त जवळचा. योहान, जेला जेला त्याचा भावला, यशुकृष्ट आणि नाव दिलोतो, सन्स ऑफ थंडर. ही वस अ शॉट टेंपर्ड, अंग्री यंग मॅन. अनीथी, अनीबडी से अनीथी अबाउट इज फेद आणि अबाउट जीसस, ही विल बी रियली अंग्री, यू रियली आक्ट इमीडिएटली. आणि डेट इस डी जॉन, नॉट जॉन डी बॅटिस्ट, बट डी जॉन डी अपॉसल. डी यंगेस्ट ऑफ डे 12 हु फॉलोव्ड जीसस. ही वस डे लॉन्ग लिव्ड अपॉसल, त्याला ही डिन डायर अर्ली आगे, ही लिव क्वाईट लॉन्ग आणि ही रोड वन मोर बुक, ही रोड जॉन डे गॉस्प, योहान कुच्चबोवर्तमान त्यानी लिले. त्यानी आजून चार पुस्तक कलिले, कॅन सम्बडी टेल मी, वर डे दोज? अनीबडी हॅस अनी क्लू, अनी आइडिया? जॉन रोड, योहान एक, दोन, तीन, तीन पत्र लिली तेने. आणि प्रगडिकरण वस रिटन बाय जॉन. सो दो जॉन डी अपॉसल, सो आउट ऑफ फोर गॉस्पल्स ओनली तू गॉस्पल्स आर रिटन बाय डी अपॉसल्स हु वर विथ जीसस, डी आय विटनेसेस. जॉन आणि मॅथ्यू. लुक, सोरी, मार्क इस अ लिली बिट ऑफ अ डिफरेंट केस. मार्क वस असो यंग पर्सन हु फॉलोव्ड दिस अपॉसल्स, बट ही वस नॉट कॉल्ड तू बी अ अपॉसल, बट ही वस अ यंग पर्सन फॉलोइंग विथ देम रनिंग अराउंड व्हायल दे फॉलोइंग जीसस. आणि इन प्रशितांच्या कृत्यामधे देखील ही इस फॉलोइंग पॉल फॉर सम टाइम आणि देन ही फॉल्स अवे फ्रॉम पॉल आणि देन ही कम्स तू पीटर. आणि मार्क कुच्चबोवर्तमान, हे पेत्राच्या मार्गदर्शन खाली मार्कनी लेले आहे. तू गिव डी स्टोरी तू डे जेंटाइल्स. मेन मेन अजेंडा ऑफ मार्क इस तू एक्सप्लेन डी गॉस्पल, व्हाट ऑल जीसस डिड तू डे जेंटाइल वर्ल्ड. डे जेंटाइल वर्ल्ड हु डायव नथिंग तू डु विथ कोण जोजेफ होता, कोण मेरी होती, कीवा हिस्ट्री काय होती, की युद्धी लोकांसाठी काय होतो की हेरोद राज आणि दोन वर्षाच्या बुलान पुराण आमाराला दिते. हिस्ट्रीची त्याना काय जेणे तन्न नोत, दे आर लाइक, दे आर लाइक महाराष्ट्रियांस, राइट? व्हाट आर वी तू डु विथ जुईश हिस्ट्री? बट वी वांट तू नो हु इस, हु इस जीसस, व्हाट पॉवर ही हॅस, ही इस पॉवर तू फर्ग्यू सिन्स. ही इस पॉवर तू हील पीपल, ही सफर्ड फॉर पीपल. सो मार्क्स इंटेंशन, मार्क्स इस अ वेरी कंसाइज, वेरी स्मॉल गॉस्पल. मजे लिटली डिटली बुकलेट्स आर केयर यूची आणि टेक इट इन रेडी इन फ्रंट ऑफ सम्बडी इन फ्यू आवर्स आणि फिनिश नो. सो मार्क इस रिटन बाय मार्क, बट इन डी गाइडेंस ऑफ अपॉसल पीटर. पेत्राच्या मार्गदर्शन खाली मार्कनी लेले हे स्वार्था आहे. आणि लुक इस नॉट अ अपॉसल, लुक इस अ कन्वर्ट, ही इस डिसाइपल ऑफ जीसस क्राइस्ट तू प्रशित पॉलाच्या स्वार्थ सांगणे, आणि सो ही राइट. सो यू नो नव, डेट आर तू गॉस्पल्स रिटन बाय अपॉसल्स, वन रिटन बाय अ डिसाइपल इन डे इन डी, बाय डी असिस्टेंस, बाय डे इन माह, सोरी, प्रशित पेत्राच्या मार्गदर्शनाने आणि लुक इस डिसाइपल. राइट, आणि हेंस त्यांच्या निन्याच्या उद्देश्य विवराय, मत्ते इस राइटिंग डेट ही इस अ किंग. आणि हेंस मत्ते राइट्स डी जिनियोलॉजी ऑफ जीसस, आणि ही स्टार्ट फ्रॉम अब्राहम. इफ यू रीड मत्ते चॅप्टर वन वर्स वन आणि 17, ही राइट्स फ्रॉम अब्राहम तू डाउन तू जीसस. बिकॉज ही इस टेलिंग, अब्राहम इस अ पार्ट कच्चियाच, आपच्या आपच्या विश्वासाचा पिता. त्याच्या तू राज्याची लायन आलीली आहे, दावद राजा, दावद राजाच्या रायन मध्ये यशुकृष्टाला आहे. ही राइट्स डेट जिनियोलॉजी फ्रॉम हियर, गिविंग डी पर्सपेक्टिव ऑफ जीसस अस किंग. वेहास, जॉन आणि मार्क आर नॉट राइटिंग डे जिनियोलॉजी. व्हाय? बिकॉज जॉन बिगिन्स ही इस गॉस्पल सेंग, इन डे बिगिनिंग वस वर्ड, वर्ड वस विथ गॉड, वर्ड वस गॉड. राइट, सो डेट इस नो जिनियोलॉजी डेट कम्स, डेट इस नो ह्यूमन पर्सपेक्टिव डेट. ही इस राइटिंग जीसस, डे गॉस्पल ऑफ जीसस अस सन ऑफ गॉड, गॉड हिमसेल. मार्क डसन राइट डे जिनियोलॉजी बिकॉज इट स्ट्रेट अवे कम तू डे पॉइंट, हु वस जीसस आणि स्ट्रेट अवे स्टार्ट टेलिंग ही इस मिरिकल, बट लुक अस अ मॅन हु वांस तू इन्विस्टिकेट, व्हाय? व्हाय अम आई अ सिनर, व्हाय अम आई अ सिनर आणि व्हाय आई नीड इस जीसस? मी एक महाराष्ट्रीय ना हे, मी एक हिंदू आणि हुआ मुस्लिम चर्मे मध्या आहे, व्हाय डू आई नीड जीसस? आई नी तू नो माय ओरिजिन गोज बॅक तू अडम आणि आदमाच्या पापा द्वारे आई इनहरिट डे ओरिजिनल सिन. सो आई अम सिनर आत डे बर्थ, नो मॅटर व्हाट बॅकग्राउंड आई अम बोन इन, आत बर्थ आई अम अ सिनर. नो मॅटर व्हाट बॅकग्राउंड आई अम फ्रॉम. आणि मणून माझ्यातला त्या इनहरिट केलेल्या ओरिजिनल पापा बद्दल, आई मस्ट रिसीव फर्गिवनेस. मी ये पापा करतो, त्या पापण मुळे मी पापी नाही, तर आई सिन बिकॉज आई अम अ सिनर ऑलरेडी. ब्यूटीफुल, एव्ही एव्ही सर्वन वी डू, दिस दिस स्टेटमेंट कम्स, आई अम शोर यू आर स्पॉटिंग दिस अ स्टेटमेंट, आई डू सिन, नॉट, आई अम अ सिनर नॉट बिकॉज आई सिन यस्टरडे, आई सिन यस्टरडे बिकॉज आई अम सिनर आत बर्थ.
Luke make sure the genealogy goes back from Jesus up to Adam. To show that he is a representative of humanity, Jesus came in our likeness. He who knew no sin became sin on the cross for you and me. Right? So only two people write the genealogy. Baptism of Jesus Christ, everybody writes. Records Jesus' birth, Yeshua Krista's birth, only Magmatte record Karto and Luke record Karto, not everybody. And hence, we have to make the take the two stories of birth of Jesus from Luke and Matthew to make the picture complete. Sometimes the picture gets complete in some little bit of errors where Lukacha Pustaka Vade Lilele Magi. Tite Apan Tinsa Akana Daktu Varan Tite Tien Types of Gifts They Give Neta. But they were not three, they were a a fuller team of Magi who appoint kings. They are the king appointing wise people, those who came. Hence Matthew writes as a perspective of king that they who know how to choose a king came to worship Jesus. And by the time they reached Jesus was almost two years. Hence, King Herod in Matthew recorded, he commands that. Pratik Mulga Do Don't You Don't Want To Chalk Say Then I Sagada Mara. Because so-called Jew, Jew, King of Jews has been done. Because Magi Luke Sangta Keva Te Challe And Keva Ten Ni To Tara Pa Hima. And then we see some events of Jesus' birth here. Deva Minparana Sangra Talan Te Purad Gele And Gavani Madhe Ten Ni Yeshua Krista Zavto. So there is a record of this and we wanna look into detail next Saturday. So please do come and please bring with you uh somebody who has not known much detail about Jesus. And Yeshua Krista's Temptations, Tijipariksha, Te Hi Tien Jokan Lili Ahai. Mark very short with the two statement with the cover Karto, whereas Matthew and Luke talks about bit more detail. But you see here, Faktar Luke Zahahe, Jo Ekav Dishita Karana Dwaray. Systematic account Dune Deana Sati, Sagaranchi Investigation Garret Astara. Mary La Teni Vicarla, Mary Mala Sang, Tuja Mulata Janma Kasahala. And Mary probably is telling him because I suspect by that time Yohanachi Ahi and Waddil maybe. Zakaria Aniti Jivanta Nastir Maybe, Yote Astilehi. And he gets all his record or John the Baptist and Manun Lukecha Pustaka Vade Yohanatsa Uleek Detail Madhe Ahai. I'm gonna move to the next slide and then we're gonna start reading the text quickly and move forward. Any question before I move on this one? I will complete this slide by putting the references below each box so that it will be available for you. Uh for you to use anytime you speak with anybody to explain this. I think there is no question at this stage if it is top me but I'm gonna move to the next slide to give you another perspective. A bit more under understanding of what is happening when we then read the text. There is a difference of six months, Sahamainya Cha Difference. Mujee Yohan Baptism Akarna Ra Ha Yeshua Krista Peksha Sahas Mainane Mota Hota. Right? That means they grew up together as cousins. Right? Uh what you see up here is a timeline, a zero month. Ek, Don, Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Nine Maine And Tithin Pudre Azun Maine, Uh Mainat Souda Wa Maina. Souda Mainan Madhe Kai Ghadlo Is What We're Gonna Read In The Luke's Gospel Where Very Systematically Writes. Gabriel, the the angel of God, Kuta Asdoha, Who He Who Stands In The Presence Of God. Wow, what a, what a privilege these people had. That angel Gabriel came and spoke with these people. He spoke with Zachariah, he spoke with Mary, he spoke with Joseph. Mark it, he never spoke with Elizabeth, he only spoke with Zachariah, we're gonna read that. Luke Ek Akra Vikris Madhe, He Spoke With Zachariah, He Gave Him The Prophecy That You Will, You'll Have A Son. And Konthe Astiti Madhe To Tenna Mulga Hona Rahe, Te Rudha Ahed, Te Weskar Ahed. All These Years His Delivered Wife Been Concealed. She's A Barren Woman Facing The Challenges From The Society. And Yasha Vektila, Perme Shor Nirvorto Andi Swarta Dedu Ki Tula Putro Hona Rahe. So He's Gonna Come Ahead Of The Lord Who Is Coming Behind Him. Techi Swarta Zare Nantor, Pach Maine She Keeps It In Her Secret. Quite Obviously, He Kunalasangnar, Weskar Zalo, Matare Zalo, Andi Ata Amala Lekru Hote. He Kunalasangnar Andi Sangun Jari Zalo Tari Rudha Te Lekru Raile Naile Raile Kunalasangta. She Keeps Inside Secret And Then After Five Months This News Comes Out. While The News Comes Out, Mary Knows What Has Happened And Mary Receives Her Opportunity To Speak With Gabriel, Gabriel And Receives The Gospel. And Tithin Pudre Ti Magti Ja Bhainila Bhaitala Zate, Tien Maine Aple Bhaini Chakare Rache. Andi Tien Mainan Tore Puna Deva Ye Te Teva, Meri Swata Tien Maine Chigurudhuti. Tite Prashna Padla Joseph La, What Must I Do? Luke Doesn't Write About It, Matthew Writes About It. And Matte Madhe Techa Manachi Tarambal Zari Li Diste Andi Tite Gabriel Telai Bhetto Andi Sangto. Joseph Pa, Jo Tijia Udara Tahe, To Dewa Tsaputra Ahhe. Look After Him And Look After Her. And Imel Souda Wa Ya Maina Madhe We See A Beautiful Story Of The Narration Of Jesus' Birth. Which We're Gonna Look Into Next Week. I'm gonna come back to our scripture and read systematically now. We read what, why, why uh this fellow is writing? Luke is writing for a systematic account. Follow in your Marathi Bible if you have Marathi Bible there or follow with me on the screen on English. Keep your Bible With You And Have A Pen And A Pencil To Underline Things. It's Very Good Thing, It's A Beautiful Things When Lord Sees Your Bible Is Being Marked And Notes Made On There. If Your Bible Is Absolutely New And No Nothing Written In There, Then It's A Very Indication That You Don't Read Your Bible. So Please Mark Along With Me. Watch and Patz, In The Days Of Herod, King Of Judea, There Was A Priest Named Zachariah Of The Division Of Abijah. And He Had A Wife From The Daughters Of Aaron And Her Name Was Elizabeth. Manje, These People Were The From The Tribe Of Lady. Te Yajak Groupa Madle Ahhe, Yakobasa Putra, Lady, Jala, Dechathru, Aaron And Moses Dogo Hote. Yan Na Dewa Chi Seva Karana Saki Nirvole Raha Group Hota. That These Were The Part Of The Priestly Line, Priestly Circle. Elizabeth And His Wife And Son, Wife, Husband And Wife Both Are From The Priestly Line. And There And They Were Both Righteous Before God. Walking Blamelessly In All The Commandments And The States Of The Lord. It's Very Important To Mark These, God Is Talking On Their Behalf. Uh Telling Them, Allowing Luke To Write These Statements That These Are Blameless And People Who Are Following The Commands. What Do You Mean By Blameless? Were They Not With Sin? They Had Sin, They Were Born With The Original Sin. But Blameless In The Sense, They Are Born By The Spirit, God Has Awakened Their Spirit. And They Are Not In The Darkness, They Are, Sorry. They Are Not Doing Their Selfish Desire In Serving The Lord, But They Are Wholeheartedly Serving The Lord. And Not Getting Trapped Into The Politics Of The Church And Not In Getting Into The Wrong Things Of The Church. The Traditions Of The Church, All These Things Are There, But They're Just Plainly Staying There. Trusting The Lord That The Lord Will Do His Will Here And Change Things And Bring Salvation. Uh In The Church Like These People Were Serving In Their Temple With Wholeheartedly That The Lord Who Has Promised. In The History That He's Gonna Send The Savior. This Is The Time When The Lord Has Not Spoken With Anybody. Charse Varsha Cha Andhakar Mantha Telah, Junakara Ramade, Swertse Pustak Zaran Antar. It Is Said Almost Four Hundred Years The Lord Has Not Spoken To Jewish People. He Has Not Shown Them Any Miracle, Not Anything. They Were Only Relying On The History And The Torah And All Those Things There Were, Where The Things Of The Old Were Written. Uh Dewan Eka Sasa So The Dubagla, Dewan Eka Saja Matkar Kele And All Those Things Were Written Down And They Were Just Relying On Them. But They Had No Child Because Elizabeth Was A Baron And Both Were Advanced In Year. Can You Imagine How Humbled They Were In The Society? You Know, Their Heart Could Have Been Hardened. Dewan E Amala Ari Uri Ami Seva Karto, Dewan Amare Putra Dewi Shakula Na, You Know. They Were Lovely Couple, Trusting In The Lord, Those Who Trust In The Lord, Their Heart Never Gets Hardened. Because They Trust In The Lord And They Trust That Whatever Happens For Them Happens For The Good Of Those Who Love The Lord And For The Greater Glory Of The Lord. These Are The Old Couple And They Advanced In Years, That Means They Are Really Advanced In Years. Right? We Beyond The Capacity Of Bearing A Child. Now, While He Was Serving As Priest Before God When His Division Was On Duty. According To The Custom Of The Priesthood, He Was Chosen By Lot To Enter The Temple Of The Lord And Burn Incense. Manje Kai, He Is A Part Of The Priestly Team, He Is Not Always There Serving In A Particular Capacity. Dewa Asazala Ki Perme Shvarane, Techi Nirvort, Techa Te Group Madhe Ghadoli Ki Daup Now He Must Enter. The Place Jithe Dhub Zalde Zata. It's A Holy Of Holy, It's The Difficult Place To Be. Dewacha Ko Shajavol Jor Tumi Avichara Ni Andi Pa Gyunala, Te Geni Heart Laavla, Te Samrutu, Te Tikani Zala, To Read Into The Old Testament. There Was A Coast That Was There In The Holy Of Holy, You Cannot Just Uh Go There Uh Lightly. Ami Askal Church Madhe Zatan Apan Khup Lightly Zato, We Just Go There Lightly. Uh We Can't, Every Time We Come Before The Lord In His Presence With His People, We Must Come To Him With Reverence And Fear On Time. And When I Say This, I Blame Myself As Well, I Struggle To Be There On Time To The Church, You Know. Our Church Is The Plus, You Know, YP can Can Die Tomorrow, Stop Tomorrow Suddenly, But The Church Will Continue. We All Must Be In The Church, All The Young People, The Pastor Of The Church Challenges Me. He Says, You Know What, You Started A New Thing, People Come There But They Don't, I Don't See Any Of Them In The Church. How Can I Answer Him? We Got To Be In The Church Young People, We Got To Be There On Time, Be Seen And Be Serious. So The People Around Us See Us There, How Seriously We Are Taking Our Faith. These People Were Ignoring The Politics, The Traditions And The Wrong Things, But The Wholeheartedly. They Were Falling The Lord And Waiting On To The Lord And Lord Knows Their Position, So We All Supposed To Be. Andi Dewacha Providence Ni, Techi Nirvort Ata Ahhe Ki He's Gonna Go Into That Inner Place. Dhavochan And The Whole Multitude Of The People Were Praying Outside At The Hour Of Incense. Bahair Baaki Chalo Pratna Karta, Deva Hand Gila Ahai. You Know, They They Say The Priest Who Go Out Would Also Tie A String To His Kamre La Ek Mota Door Bandun To Adzaisa Karan Adgelela Vakti. Bahair Jivante Yehil Ki Na Yechipan Garantina Sech. That's How Holy Our God Is, We Can't Take Him Lightly. We Can't Take Him For Granted, We Must Be Shaken In Our Faith. Multitude Of People Were Praying Outside While He Was Inside. Deva Dewatsa Sevak Deva Watchen Achi Sevak Karat Asto, Dewa Te Baaki Te Sevak, They Should Pray In Their Heart For Him. Prabhu, As He Standing There, Taking Your Word In The Hand, Taking The Two Ed. Talvarji Do, Di Dari Talvari Peksha, Sharper Watchen Tuja Hata Gintu Thamla Ahai, Prabhu Telah Madatkar, Techa Badun Tu Bol, Techa Badun Tuja Hava Samala Ay Kudari. Ashi Pratna Karana Chivritti Amam Madhe Asami, We Should Be Praying For Preachers Who Stand There And Reach. We Should Be Praying Before The Meeting, Hamche Church Madhe Savay Huti. Pray Se Bear Suru, Service Suru, Acha Ardada Sadi, All Those Who Serve In The Church, We Will Meet In The Back Of The Church. And We All Will Pray For The Preacher And The Preaching And All Those Who Are Coming To Here. It's A Very Good Thing But Sometimes We Just So Struggling With Our Life, We Are Not Even On Time On The Church. We Must Be In The Church Before The Time, Can't Give An Excuse, Even Of The Church Kud Sakari Asteyo Da Sakari Zata Na. People, If We Are Like Luke, We Will Want To Come Out Of Our Comfort Zones And Be There With The Lord. When I Say This, I Want To See Myself As Well, Whether I'll Be Able To Do That. We Tried Sometime Back In The Syna, In YPF, To Meet An Hour Before The Church, To Practice The Hymns And To Be There. But We Are Struggling That That Passion Is Not Yet Coming In Us, Maybe Pray For That. Watch An Akra, And There Appeared To Him An Angel Of The Lord Standing On Right Side Of The Altro Incense. Tite Atma De Gelan Tare Tel Aektal Astana, Deudu Tisla And Zachariah Was Troubled When He Saw Him And Fear Fell Upon Him. Tez Agi Korisnast, Adushe Perme Shor. Sevak Zato Sevak Karto, Ni Gune To, Nothing He Sees, Suddenly There Is Somebody Standing And A Glorious Being Standing There. Of Fear, Fear Fell Upon Him, But The Angel Of The Lord Said, Do Not Be Afraid Zachariah. For Your Prayer Has Been Heard. Arre Konthi Pratna, Konthi Pratna Vi Keeli Huti, Vare Zale Maza Pratna Korun Thoklo Atameti Pratna Hai Karatsa Thamlo. Can You Imagine? Can You Imagine Zachariah And His Wife Praying For A Son In Those Days? No, All Done, Life Zale, Sagal Zala, Te Property Kunalal Indichi Kaye Maiti, We Don't Know Lord. He's Just Coming And Serving The Lord And The Word He Gaves, Do Not Be Afraid Zachariah, For Your Prayer Has Been Heard. And Your Wife Elizabeth Will Bear A Your Son And You Shall Call Him John. Shocked, What Am I Hearing? It's Beautiful To My Ear But I Am Struggling. Misoknet Naibagate Zachara Zaga Sunas. And You Will Have Joy And Gladness And Mary Will Rejoice At His Birth. Techa Janma Mure Khuplo Khan Na Anandavilt, Techa Janma Chavre Is Khuplo Ka Anandatati. Why? Because God Is Gonna Receive Glory Because An Impossible Is Happening. An Impossible Is Happening. He Vayovruddh Loakhahena Mulga Hona Rahe. Many Will Rejoice At His Birth To See God's Grace Because Charse Varsha Cha Andhakaron Antar, Paknanda Kai Tiri Ghadna Rahe. People Are Gonna Be Shaken For He Will Be Great Before The Lord. And He Must Not Drink Wine And Strong Drink And He Will Be Filled With The Holy Spirit Even From His Mother's Room. This Is The Calling Of Parents. Aple Church Madhe Udaya, Duri Karan Amar Ahai. Right? Do You Know That? Yeah? Many Young People Are Going To Be Confirmed. We're Gonna Study About This As Well In Our forthcoming Studies. It's A Very Important Study To Understand What Is Happening There. But. He Jese Sangna Talila Ahai, Mulga Azun Janan Le La Nahe, Poruntu Ya Ahi Vodla Anna Sangna Talai Ki How You Will Raise Him? A Child Must Be Brought To A Level Then He Takes The Responsibility. Tass, Tass, Amche A Church Madhe Ya Ahi Vodla Ni, Te Laekran Na, Lan Pani, Uh Traditional Baptism Adila. Andi Ata Shikon Church Madhe Anun, Duri Karan Karana Chichcha Karta Ha. Karan It Is The Desire Of The Parents And Responsibility Of The Parents To Land The Children On To The Right Path Of Faith. Tithin Pudre To Faith Mirvay Sa And Born Again Hoi Sa, He Te Laekran Sa Jurni Ahai. And The Lord Will Deal With Each One Of Them. Udaya Ahi Vodla Chizav De Ri Purna Hona Rahe, Poruntu Te Upra Vaktila, Te Amala, Mi Jo, Te Duri Karan Ta Bahair Hote. Ata, I Must Be Searching For Answer On My Own And Come To The Knowledge Of Faith And Repentance. And That Happens When The Lord Will Raise Me Spiritually And Cause Me To Be Born Again. I Purposefully Say These Things In A Way There Way I Speak Because I Want Each One Of You Who Here. Understand The Sequence Of The Events That Should Happen For One In The Life And Walk Of Faith. So For He Will Be A Great Before The Lord And Be, He Must Not Drink Wine Or Strong Drink. And He Will Be Filled With The Holy Spirit Even From His Mother's Room Is An Instruction Given To The Parents. And Yes, Mota Zaran Tare Ta Savay Madhe, John Is Going To Remain In That Because He Is Filled With The Holy Spirit Right At His Birth. The Lord, The God Has Already Dealt With His Original Sin That He Inherits At Conception. But He Is Born With The Guidance And The Protection Of The Holy Spirit Because His Calling Is Special. He's Coming To Make The Path Straight And He Will Turn Many Of The Children Of Israel To The Lord Their God. Karan Many Of The Children Of Israel Are Turn Away, They Only Come To The Churches But Their Heart Is Somewhere Else. They Are Filled With Politics And Traditions, They Are Filled With Their Own Jobs. Church Madhe Basle Astana Phone Hote, Manus Phone Uzolton Bahar Bum Phone Vidho, Andi Ha Okay, Yes, Yes, You Do Your Deal, That's Fine, That's Fine, You Oto Church Madhe Tula Bait To. I Have Got Everything Very Much Great And Important Than The Word Of God. I Cannot Even Switch Off My Phone In Those Two Hours When I Am With My Lord And The Lord's People. And He Turns Then He Will Turn Many Who Are Children Of God Who Have Turn Away From The Lord To The Lord To Thank. Dewa Kade Lakshitense Vidungel And He Will Go Before Him In The Spirit And The Power Of Elijah. He Is Not Reincarnation Of Elijah, He Is Not Rebirth Of Elijah As Some Would Interpret It Like That. But He Will Come In The Likeness Of The Prophet Elijah. Mighty Power, Word That Pierces People, Straight Speaking, No Compromise. To Turn The Hearts Of The Fathers To Their Children And The Disobedience To The Wisdom Of Just. To Turn The Hearts Of Fathers To Children And The Disobedient To The Wisdom Of The Just. Who Is Of The Just? The Just Is God, Just Is God. Uh You Can Read Uh It's A Beautiful Chapter In Proverbs, Chap- Chapter Proverbs, Chapter Nine. Read The Whole Beautiful Chapter Talks About The Characteristics Of Chapter Eight, Sorry, Characteristics Of Wisdom. Wisdom Of The Just, Dev Ha Just Ahhe, Jo Niti Mana Ahhe, Asha Dewa Chi Niti, Tijisudnyata, Teche Samarthe, Teche Budhi. To It We, He's Gonna Turn Them To Uh And The Disobedient To The Wisdom, Je Disobedient Ahhe, Je Adne Banga Chiche, Meda Adkile Ahhe. Tian Na, Te Asaru Samarthe Akade, Vodho Na Se Kam, Ham, Johan Karana Re, To Make Ready The Lord Of People Prepare. Dewa Kartaa, Teche Log, Tayar Karana Rahe. And Zachariah Said To The Angel, How Shall I Know This? For I Am An Old Man And My Wife Is Advanced In Year, There Was A Doubt In His Talk. Is He Really Talking To The Angel Or Screaming Or Whatever It May Be? An Old Man Filled With Joy And Fear, A Mixed Reaction, He Is Asking A Question, How Can It Be? Quite Obvious, We Cannot Put Him Down With Those Questions, Quite Obvious. And Hence YP Horses Ask The Question, Guys, You Don't Understand, If I'm Telling Again And Again That You Must Be Born Again. And If You Don't Understand What I'm Saying, Ask It. Karan Jevatni Vicharta, No Matter What Age Group You Are, A Young Twelve Year Old Or Seventy Year Old, Eighteen Year Old Or Thirty Five Year Old. Tis Varsha Cha Astana, Mi Malaha Prashna Alata, Mi Vicharlal, Malaha Uktar Me Ala, And I Am Born Again. So, How Shall I Know This? For I Am An Old Man And My Wife Is Advanced In Years And The Angel Answered Him, I Am Gabriel, I Stand In The Presence Of God. Maza Vajut Is From God, I Stand In The Presence Of God, It's A Serious Matter. Perme Shvarne Malapathola Ahai And I Was Sent By God To Speak To You And To Bring You This Good News. It's Authentic, It's Sure, It's Pure. And Behold, You Will Be Silent And Unable To Speak Until The Day That These Things Take Place. It's A Judgment But A Very Sweet One. Can You Imagine Ya Warthet Ke Madhe, At He No Ko, Lokana Kasah Samson Samna Kai Zale Ahai, Kasla Samat Kar Ahai. Utna Ata Lekru And All These Things At That Old Age, It's A Beautiful Judgment Of God That You Know What, Don't Speak Now. Everything Will Be Fine. Karan Tu Bahair Gela Baro, Tu La, Lokaveda Podo Puti, Vicharun, Vicharun Sangun, Sangun, You'll Just Get. You Just Need To Ponder Upon This Amazing Thing That Is Happening In Your Life, The Miracle. Kadhi Kadhi Miracle Shanta Deva Tumi Asnera, Dewa Tomala Nidist. But Deva Tumi Shu Baharong Jene Asta, Tomala Kai Gusti Detail Patasit Nahe. I Believe This Quite Well Karan, Presid Paul Could See When Um What's His, What's His Name Was Stoned? Um. The First Disciple, The Very First Disciple, Uh Not Philip, Um Ah, Anyone Remembers His Name? Blank. Jera Dagadha Mar Nadali.
Stephen.
Stephen, Yes, Thank You So Much. Kuniya Nava Naviyan, Stephen Was Stoned And Paul Was Standing There Holding People's Co, Paul Bizin Hota Dagadha Uchnu Marana Madhe. To Hatak Code Durun, Stephen Is Kade Pahat Hota. And Stephen Cha Loksho, Saurva Kade Hoto, Jite Asli Lila Ahai Ki He Saw The Lord And Before He Died. And He Surrendered His Life Into The Lord. And Techa Niter Kai Disani Paulas Konvoilation Zale, Andi To Paul, Presid Anchi Kurtte Lina Ra. Uh Luke Yala Sangto Karan Luke Ni Very Detail Madhe Lili Ahai, How, How Did Uh Stephen Was Killed? And How Paul Came To The Lord Is The Point I'm Trying To Make Here Is When You Are Quiet. And We'll Try To See The Lord Shows You. Te Adishi Paulala, Dewan E Daakala, Stephen Martha Astana Ki Paha To Murto, Poruntu Techa Do, Tuntau Satej Jia Ahhe, Te Maza Ahhe To Maza Nirvole Lila Ahai. Sola Sola To Mada Chodka Karto, Asa Prashna Vicharun Tera Kama Kita. Okay, Back To, Back To Track, I Get, I Sometime Get Digressed, Yeah? Um So Here It Says. Behold, You'll Be Silent So The Judgment Here Is For Good Of, Uh Good Of Zacharias And His Wife. Kibapati Shanta Rata, Faktar Focus On The Baby And Look After Them, Don't Talk, Don't Try To Face These People. Now How? Because You Did Not Believe My Word Which Will Be Fulfilled In The Time And The People Were Waiting For Zacharias. Okay, And The People Were Waiting For Zacharias And They Were Wondering At His Delay In The Temple. Tena Prashna Padla Ata Keala, Ushirka Lagla Atmadun Bahair Le. And When He Came Out, He Was Unable To Speak To Them And They Realized That He Had Seen A Vision In The Temple. But Only Realized They Don't Know What Vision He Saw. And He Kept Making Signs To Them And Remained Mute. And When He, When His Time Of The Service Was Ended, He Went To His Home. Kai Zalo, He Went His Home, To Bahair Ana, Tu Sustas, Sign Kuru, Samat, Apun Kunal Kai Karat Noto. And He, God Literally Muted Him Because This Is The Miracle That Has To Be Realized A Little Bit Later For By The Others. After These Days, His Wife Elizabeth Concealed, Beautiful Blessing. And For Few Months, For Five Months, She Kept Herself Hidden. Right? It's, It's Very Challenging For Someone To Get, You Know, Uh Pregnant At That Advanced Age. First Of All, It's Not Possible, It's A Miracle Yet They Are Happy, Confused, Fearful. And Also Aple Saade Samaja Madhe Bhukto, Apun Ekadi, Mulgi Sun, Goro Do Zan Ki Gharchero, Pele Tien Maine Kunalasangna Duz Nahe. Why? Because They Want To Be Made, Make Sure That The, 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 The Conception Stabilizes. The Girl Becomes Strength And They Don't Want To Just Speak Out Loud, Boastfully About It. But Remain Humble And Keep It Inside And Then After Three Months When It's Confirmed, They Give The News Out. It Had Deep Past Many Thamli Because She Was Absolutely Not Sure What's Happening. She Was, Because Angel Had Not Spoken To Her, Angel Has Spoken To Her Husband. And Her Husband Through Signs And Writing Has Told Her She Has Believed Her Husband. And She Had To Believe Because She Has The Sign In A Boom. So Past Meneti Shantrein. Does The Lord Has Done For Me? And She Says, Does The Lord Has Done For Me The Days When He Looked On Me To Take Away My Reproach Among The People? Being Barren Is A Hard Thing In The Society. You Know, Nowadays At Least The Society Is Advanced, People Have Got Wider Open Mind, People Don't Act The Way They Act In Old Days. Because Uh People Used To Be, You Know, They Used To Look Down At The Woman Where She's A Baron. Let's Move Forward, There Is Many Things Can Be Said Here, But I Hope You Guys Are Following With Me, We Almost Coming To An End, Yeah? Uh Maybe Few More Minutes, Please Bear With Me. In The Sixth Month Nam, At The Sahve Aman Emane, The Angel Gabriel Was Sent From God To A City Of Galilee Named Nazareth. Now Those Who Have Been To Nazareth And Have Seen This Thing, These People Will Be Able To Tell You The Distance Between Where Elizabeth Was And Where Nazareth Was. Right? I Don't Wanna Go Go There Because I've Not Brought Those Details Forward With Me, But It's A Distance, Two Cities, There Is A Distance Between Them. To Virgin, To A Virgin Betrothed To A Man Whose Name Was Joseph Of The House Of David. And The Virgin's Name Was Mary. And the virgin's name was Mary. Historians, when they study, they find these genealogies and they find it that they both are from the line of David, kingly line. And the virgin's name was Mary. And he came to her, said, greetings, oh favored one, the Lord is with you. What a beautiful greeting, isn't it? Hearing in soft voice, suddenly she is working, she is busy doing and she hears this greetings, oh favored one. Oh favored one. These are all called favored ones, why they are favored? Not because there is anything good in them, but because they are chosen from eternity by the most high God, by his free will, by his goodwill. Those of us who find favor in the Lord are called blessed. Favored one, greeting, one. Greetings, oh favored one, the Lord is with you. But she was greatly troubled at the saying and tried to discern what sort of greeting this might be. Just confused, young girl. She is just innocent, she is a beautiful innocent girl, raised by her parents, taught her from her childhood to believe in the most high, most high God Jehovah. And the angel said to her, do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. This greeting is beautiful, do not be afraid. Every time Jesus comes as well, he says, do not be afraid, do not be afraid. Because he knows we are made with clay, we are made with weakness and there is a, the sin that dwells in us makes us weak. And hence, when we come before the most high God, before the truth, we will be afraid. And then he gives us confidence, do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. And behold, you will conceive in you a womb and bear a son. And you shall call his name Jesus. He will be great, he will be called the son of most high. And the Lord God will give him the throne of his father David. And he will reign over the house of Jacob forever and of his kingdom there will be no end. Which is what is on our invite, you know? And to us, a son is given, and to us, a son is, let us go there. Unto us, child is born, for unto us, son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. And his name will be called wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, prince of peace. We are not going to go in detail there because next week we are going to look into that particular. And the Mary said to the angels, how will this be? Since I am a virgin, exactly what Zachariah asked, how can it be? Since I am an old man and my wife is also advanced in years. An impossible thing, Mary has a very genuine question because I am a virgin. How is it possible? Are you going to wait until I get married and what? How will this be? Since I am a virgin. And the angel answered her, the Holy Spirit will come upon you and the power of the most high will overshadow you. Therefore, the child to be born will be called the son of God. The one who would be born without the inheritance of the original sin. He is holy, holy, holy at his birth because he is born of God. And behold, your relative Elizabeth, now here it is the answering her. How is it possible? It is impossible for me to be, for me to be conceiving. The answer is here, for nothing will be impossible for God. For behold, your relative Elizabeth in her old age has also conceived a son. And this is the sixth month with her who is called barren. Quite obvious because. Elizabeth Shantari, Gappurari, Lapunari, she is pregnant. But after six months, she comes out and suddenly tells everybody, you know what, this is the miracle of God. I am pregnant and the news has spread across that region. Everybody knows a miracle has happened. A woman in his own old days has been pregnant and they are able to believe because they know from Abraham's story. They have a son, Isaac. So they are able to take that as a miracle and Mary also knows that. But Mary doesn't know how it is all with the details. Now the angel who gave that good news to Elizabeth, gives that good news and says that. And you know, Mary, behold, your relative Elizabeth in her old age has also conceived a son. He is now, now a third, third person news that Mary might have heard. Older people talking in the house, Mary is a young girl, she might not be part of these topics. You know, we don't know what's happening. But here, the firsthand news and confirmation that what Elizabeth has is the God's blessing and the miracle. This is the sixth month with her who has called barren. For nothing will be impossible, God, that's what is our message today. For nothing will be impossible with God. He will save you, cause you to be born again and you will say, yes, it's true. Nothing is impossible for God because for me who was trapped and trapped in traditions and all ways, old ways of doing things. I never knew that I needed Christ and being born again, yet I am born again today and I can say, nothing will be impossible with God. And Mary said, behold, I am a servant of the Lord, let it be with me according to your word. And the angel departed from her. But I am your servant, Lord, I believe, let it be according to you. I don't want to know how it's going to happen, I don't want to know how it will be, we pregnant. I just know that I am in your hands and I am favored one. That knowledge itself is enough for me, I am born again, I am a believer, I am in the eyes of, I am the apple of God's eye. He says. I am rest assured, I will walk with you, Lord, I will take my cross, I will believe in you. My every deed, my every action will be a reflection of the fact that I believe in you now from now. Thirty-nine, in those days, Mary arose and went with haste to, into the hill country to a town of Judea. She entered the house of Zachariah and greeted Elizabeth. And Elizabeth heard the greeting of Mary, the baby leap in the womb. Because she knew that she herself is pregnant and Elizabeth is pregnant for a reason. She is not alone in this whole game of grace, but there is my relative and there is a great joy of calling her from outside. But here Elizabeth, in her old age, trying to bear that baby in the womb. Can you imagine an old lady getting pregnant and carrying the whole burden around her waist there? Tired, trying to manage and suddenly the baby leaps out, jumps inside the womb. The whole energy comes in Elizabeth, rejoicing and Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Spirit. Holy Spirit clears her, saying that, I have sent to you the mother of the son that I am sending, the Savior. She exclaimed with a loud cry, blessed are you among the women, blessed is the fruit of your womb. And why is this great? Why is this granted to me that the mother of my Lord should come to me? It is a humble statement, I think, why should she come? I must go to her. There was a, there was a Roman officer who came to Jesus and he said, I have a, I have a servant who is not well. Don't come, you don't deserve to come, you just say your words, I have come to you to just receive the grace. Why is this granted to me? What a privilege that is granted to all of us on this earth sinners? That the most high God should send his son to be like us and come to us Emmanuel God with us. But in me, who believe in the Lord Jesus, I was always thirsty, but you know what the miracle is? The Kua has come to me, that happens only for the elect. The Lord comes to you, seeking and searching you and finds you and takes you on his shoulders. And why is this granted to me? It's a beautiful thing. Why me? Why have you chosen me, Lord? Who am I? I am a simple guy, an IT consultant, I have got so many things to do. But why have you chosen me to do these things? Why have you chosen someone else to do these things? Maybe ask that question, why, oh Lord, such a grace? Now, oh Lord, I will stand for you and I will take your word to your people, who will go, Lord says, after he saves me. That the mother of the Lord should come to me. For behold, when the sound of your greeting came to my ear, the baby in my womb leaped for joy. And blessed is she who, who believed, what she says, blessed is she who believed. Everybody who believes in Jesus renews his faith, be born again. Blessed is he, believe who believes without seeing Jesus. Without believes, without seeing any miracle, believes without seeing any healing. He just comes because the word of God is speaking with them and they come and they believe and give their life to Lord. Blessed is she who believed that there would be a fulfillment of what was spoken of her from the Lord. Behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son and shall he, shall name him Emmanuel, that is God with us. It takes something to believe in word of God, it takes something to believe in son of God. It takes something to believe in the Trinity, God the Son, God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. It's not an ordinary thing, you are able to believe, believe that the faith has come to you from above. And then Mary sings beautiful song, read it on your own time, I am going to close it now very quickly. Now the time came to, for Elizabeth to give birth and she bore a son. And her neighbors and relatives heard that the Lord had shown great mercy to her and they rejoiced with her. And on the eighth day, they came to circumcise, no, sorry, this is. Yeah, and the eighth day, they came to circumcise the child and they would have called him Zachariah. We must continue his genealogy and his name, so let's name his Zachariah. But his mother answered, I will know, he shall be called John because Zachariah. His name must be John. And they said to her, no, none of your relative is called John by this name. And they made signs to his father inquiring that what he would want his name to be called. And he asked the, for the writing table, tablet and wrote, his name is John. And they all wondered and immediately his mouth was open. And his tongue loose and he spoke, blessing God. Is suddenly able to speak, it's the Lord testifying to the people that I have sent. I have sent you a messenger who is going to make your path straight, who is going to turn your hearts through repentance to the living God. And a fear came on all the neighbors, what is it? A fear, a righteous fear came on those because after four hundred years of gap, they saw a miracle, miracle by their own eyes. And all these things were talked about through all the hill country Judea and all who heard them laid them up in their hearts saying, what then will this child be like? For the hand of the Lord was upon him. And then it goes and it finishes and the child grew and became strong in spirit. And he was in the wilderness until the day of his public appearance to Israel. This man we know grew up as John the Baptist, speaking bold, not compromising anybody. Speaking absolutely truth, we will one day study his own character completely. But we saw a miracle in the life of Elizabeth. We heard about the miracle and we are going to remind ourselves next week about miracle in the life, life of Mary. These were all impossible things, hence the glory goes to God. May God bless us with the story that we heard, we didn't go too deep into the life of John. John grew up, John was martyred, John was killed, but John had a great ministry. He pointed people to Jesus. Jesus came to be baptized to him when, that's when John said to Jesus, you know what? I am, I am not supposed to be baptized by you, in fact, I am the one who needs to be baptized by you. And Jesus said, no, do this, do the right thing. And all those things, John said, I must be, decree and he must increase. Eventually died and Jesus says, there was no great man who was born to woman than John. And then it takes further saying, the least in the kingdom of heaven. We are greater than John, that's another context to learn and listen. But Jesus speaks about John at his death and says, he was great servant of God. May God bless us with what we heard today and prepare our hearts for tomorrow's service. Because tomorrow we will hear something, another angle from servant of God. God will speak with each one of us through our churches, so please go to your churches on time, be there. And make sure that next Saturday, again we are meeting nine o'clock. Put an alarm, wake up and join into rejoice in the birth of Jesus Christ. In whose name we pray and ask, amen. Any question before we get to the last part? I will not go around the table like we do normally, across it. Probably time for you all to go back as well for your routine Saturday. Yatata, you raised a hand, you want to ask a question or you are ready for the song?
No, it was my mistake, it was my mistake, I am sorry.
No worries, no worries, but are you ready with the song?
Yes, I will sing a hymn.
Very good, yeah, beautiful.
It's more related to Luke chapter one, verse fourteen, I think so.
Let's see.
To God be the glory, great things he had done. So loved he the world that he gave us his son. Can I sing only the first stanza since there is not much of time left?
No, sing it full, it's okay, I think, main message is done, if anybody is getting late, they can drop off, don't feel bad about it. We know it's late, but it's lovely to sing a beautiful song completely, why not?
Sing along with me, if you know the song.
Can you send me the link so I can put into the screen or maybe I just search it, give me the lyrics?
Can I just send a photo?
Tell me the first line.
To God be the glory, great things he had done.
Is everybody able to see this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can go ahead, Yatata, if you don't go on mute, we will sing along with you.
To God be the glory, great things he had done. So loved he the world that he gave us his son. सो लव्ह दी डी वर्ल्ड डेट ही गेव अस इस सन हो इलेड इस लाइफ आणि अटॉर्मिन फॉर सिन आणि ओपन डी लाइफ गेट डेट ऑल में गो इन